Okay, um, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the May 7th, 2026 meeting of the Cohasset School Committee. Would all members who are present please indicate so in roll call? Mr. Carr?
To Carr, I.
Mr. Dial?
Uh, Dial, I.
Shannon is not present, Mrs. Lesky?
Present.
Chair is present, giving us a quorum of four members. I will officially call the meeting to order. Would all those who are able, please rise for the recitation of our nation's pledge allegiance and maybe our kindergartners and someone's Ricky could help us with that? Whenever you guys are ready.
To the United States of America, and to the Republic of the States, one nation, united, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, guys. Great job. All right, just a reminder at the outset that this meeting is being broadcast on Cohasset 143 TV. It's being live streamed on Facebook, and you can participate virtually by utilizing the link that appears at the top of the agenda, logging onto Zoom. And you may use a Q and A feature to let us know what is on your mind. The first agenda item is always a public comment, and this is the section of the agenda that's reserved for members of our community to share their thoughts on something that is not already on the agenda. If you have a question or comment about something that is on the agenda, just please wait until we arrive at that point in the meeting, and then we're going to be more than happy to hear from you. So I'll just give everyone at home a few minutes to generate any comments using the Q and A feature on Zoom. And I think most of the visitors in person are here for our exciting presentation that's up next. But if you have something to say, surely raise your hand, let us know. Just ask anyone that is participating in today's meeting at any time, whether it's a public comment or otherwise, to simply state their full name and residential address. That is so that we can keep an accurate record of the meeting. All right, I am not seeing any questions or comments, virtually nor do I see any hands raised, so we'll just move right into the invited guest section of our agenda. And I think what I'll do is turn it over to our superintendent of schools to introduce our visitors for the first for the first segment of this agenda block. Superintendent Shannon?
Thank you. So we are very excited tonight. We have Ms. Owen to review, one of our kindergarten teachers here with six of our kindergarten students. And they are here to show off their literacy skills. We have several programs that make up our literacy program in general. Two of those components are foundations integrity. And we, a couple of years ago, showed in a school committee meeting, the the literature piece of the programming, and so tonight is about the phonics. And so I would invite Ms. Owen's Ricky and our students to come to the middle of the room to show off your skills.
Come on around here this way, guys. So impressed, such a long day of learning, you guys.
You guys can sit right there on the floor, just like, just as though you had a rug in your classroom. You know how you all sit in certain spots? Maybe a little closer.
You guys get to see yourselves on TV. Exciting, right?
Oh, you can see yourself. Thank you so much for this opportunity. Our kindergartners are very excited to be able to show you the hands-on, engaging learning programs that we are using at Osgood, namely integrity and foundations. So we're going to start the lesson with integrity. And integrity is a phonemic awareness program, and our students know it as basically word games. So what we do with these word games is students learn to segment sounds, blend sounds, and manipulate sounds, which are all very critical skills for reading. Okay, are you ready? Okay. So we're going to start with, our first game is going to be, I'm going to say some sounds, then you'll say the sounds, and then you'll blend them together to say the word. Ready with your choppers? Okay, here we go. Very good. Next word. And do the next word. Excellent, very good. Now let's try one of the long sounded. Ready? Good job. Okay, our next game is going to be, I'll say a word, you'll say a word, and then we're going to find the middle sound of that word. That's where the vowel is. Okay, ready? There we go. Say code. Oh, I hear a long vowel sound there. Pick it up. Next word, say hi. There we go. Say he, do this. Last one, say date. Excellent job, everybody. Really good work. This time, I'm going to say the word, and you'll say the word. You'll chop each sound in the word. You ready? Say much. Excellent, very nice. Next word is spy. Let's chop it. Spy, yeah. Think about the sounds in that. Think about how many sounds in each word. Say rich. Let's chop it. Say touch. Good. Last one, say scope. Hmm, so some words with three sounds and some words with four sounds. Great. In our next game, I'm going to say a word, then we'll add a new sound to the end of the word and make a new word. Are you ready? Say store. The new word is say free. And the new word is say cry. Very good. Say one. At the end, and the new word is excellent, nice job, everyone. This time, we're going to say, I'm going to say a word, and then I'm going to ask you to say it without the last sound. We'll make a different word. Say grape. Without the, what's left? Say free. Try that one more time. Say freeze. Without the z, what's left is, that happens sometimes. Without the d, what's left is dry. Say once. Fantastic, nice job. All right, now, let's get our word-changing machines ready. Ready? We're going to be changing the last sound of the word. Say hen. Change the n to d, and the new word is let's think about what we're going to say. Let's change the n to d. Say le. Change the p to s, and the new word is say word. Change the d to k, and the new word is work. Good job, everybody. That was excellent. Okay. We're at the end of the year now, and it's very complex. So we're going to move on to a little bit of a foundations lesson next. And in foundations, our students learn the relationship between letters and sounds. You can see with integrity, students aren't seeing any words. It's all done by hearing the words. So we're going to be looking at some letters, thinking about the sounds, and then using those skills to blend and read some words. And start with practicing few sounds that are going to be really helpful. Are you ready for some letters, keywords, and sounds, everybody? All right, let's start with some letters. Here we go. Your turn? U, u. A, a. I, i. Q, queen. O, o, octopus, o. E, e. Good job. Let's try some digraphs now, probably. S, ship. W, whistle. C, chin. T, thong. K, sock. We might be saying some of those when you read and spell some words. I'm going to give everybody an authentic letter board. Ready? Go. Open up your get ready. We're going to fill the word. Five of the sounds, blend them together, and read that word. Or you wrap, just like we do. Okay, here comes our first word. We'll just spell it for you. Everyone find the W. Part of your word. Let's find A. Right in the middle of the words. We have our beginning letter, our ending letter, our middle letter. Let's find S. Our ending letter. Okay, get our pointer power ready. Excellent job. Great. All right. Real word or not real word? Wax is a real word, right? Maybe you should try something else. Okay, ready? Find L. First letter. Find E. Put that as the beginning of the word. Let's find the digraph C, K. End of the word. Stop. Get our pointer power ready. We're sliding through these sounds. I don't know that word. Do you know that word? I bet if we changed one of the letters, we could make it into a real word, right? All right, let's go ahead and erase. This time, we're going to use our letter boards to help us. We're learning also, we're going to spell words, so we're going to use our letter boards to help us spell words. Are we ready, everybody? The first word we're going to spell is rush. Take your time. You don't need to rush. So let's get our choppers ready. We're going to chop all the sounds in rush. Ready? Okay, now our first job is to think about, hmm, what's the letter that goes with the r sound? When you find it, put it at the beginning of your word. Good. Okay, let's chop again. Say rush. Now we have to think about, what is the letter that goes with the ah sound? Good. Ooh, nice job. Okay, chop one more time, everybody. I see people checking their digraphs. Excellent. Put that right at the end of the word. Hey, how did you spell it? Can you read the names of the letters? Nice job with the digraph. Okay, let's slide through the sounds and make sure we spelled it right. Nice job, everybody. Excellent. All right. Let's try one more word. This time, it's not going to be really what we're ready. Listen to the word carefully. The word is fit. Let's chop it. So first up, we're going to find the letter that says, put it right at the beginning of our word. Ready, chop, everyone? Ready to chop for the middle sound? Here we go, fit. Which vowel says eh? And one more time. Letter says okay, what? Spell the names of these letters. Ready? What did you put? Excellent, slide through the sounds. Let's make sure it sounds just the way we said it. Nicely done, everyone. Good work. So we're going to this of our letter boards. We'll just maybe pop them right near us on the floor for now. And then we'll just have one more thing we want to show you. We also learn to read words. Words that don't necessarily follow the rules, right? So let's take a look at a couple of our couple of our trick words. This one is spelled T-O, and it says this one is spelled L-I-K-E, and it says now, we're going to see those words in this sentence. Are you ready with your pointer power and your slider power, everyone looking this way? Here we go, ready? Let's do it one more time. Put all that emotion into it. Ready, here we go.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for inviting us. We're super excited to be able to come and show you.
So I don't know if any of the new members might have a few questions or comments, and just go around. Mr. Carr, anything?
I think this is wonderful. I want to especially compliment that young man, Ruth Ty.
You like his style.
Great job, guys. You like to read.
If you could see our students during literacy time, in book groups and partnerships, reading privately, it's just amazing. They're really doing an amazing job.
It's fantastic. It's, we've heard a lot about this program, and it's great to see it in action, to see how the kids are engaging as well. Not being educated myself, I could still see how breaking it apart into sounds can draw those connections together for them. So this is, this is fantastic. I guess one of the things that, I know we've talked a lot about the committee, there are people who have concerns about either integrity or foundations, or which, and I would get confused which one. I mean, seeing this, I mean, see, it seems like an effective program to engage with the kids. I guess what, what are, I mean, images I've talked about other time, and I'm still curious as to what the concerns are that maybe are those, and I know we addressed those concerns, by the way, we blended the programs together, and I saw that in action here. It was very helpful. I mean, what are, I guess, was there an element of, there was nothing I saw that seemed objectionable or concerning or seemed very effective, I guess?
Yeah, I think it's, one of the biggest things is that you can, it's very hard to buy a program or a box program that has everything in it. Because as you saw, these are very important skills that the students need to learn, and so when we, when we looked at our comprehensive literacy, we wanted to make sure that we got all those parts. So I think that you have to make sure that you're attacking all of it, and so I think sometimes there's concerns that, that not all of the components are being that not all the components are being addressed. So this is the part, I think most people are concerned about, they want to make sure, are they learning how to learn about the sounds and the connections to the letters? Are they learning to segment and pull those sounds together, as you've heard them do? And so when we looked at it, we made sure that we had foundations, which was in place, and that's been in place for quite some time, and then we added integrity. And then the other component is the comprehension and pulling it all together, which is the other part of the literacy piece, Reader's Workshop, where you were talking about how they enjoy their reading, they learn how to comprehend and understand what they're, not just how to read, which is what you saw here. And I don't know if you have anything that I didn't, oh, and do you want to talk about it? Is long, so he has the short for ten.
I have the same thing. Yeah, my real name is Edwin.
So you made such a good connection.
Thank you for sharing.
It's a scalable skill. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Dial, Mrs. Lesky?
Thank you, thank you, thank you. That is such hard work, and I think it's worth pointing out how hard your brains are working and absorbing information when you're doing this, because you're not only listening and using your ears, you're seeing and using your eyes, and you're also moving your body. And your body, and all of those messages are really helping you to read. And so one of the things, I used to be a teacher too. One of the things I really like seeing is the, how this is called multi-sensory approach to reading, and that we really saw that today in that you were using all of your senses to figure out how symbols and sounds relate. And that's pretty amazing. That's the first thing to do for readers, and gosh, we're reading names and doing all sorts of other things. You better cover up our notebooks, right? And they're only kindergarten. There's no more spelling that we're having I-C-E-C-R-E-I-M for dessert anymore, right?
Thank you, Mrs. Lesky. I can see that this has been a long day for these kindergartners, and we're losing a little stamina, so I am just going to thank you guys for being here and maybe get another round of applause for our kindergarten. Television performance, too. You guys are great. Thank you for being here.
My pleasure. So glad to show you what our kindergartners are doing. It's just amazing.
It is. Absolutely. And I'm sorry, Principal Goddard, you're welcome to add if you'd anything, if you'd like anything other than that. I'm sorry, I just, I was focused on
One more thing, I have a fifth grader who's a reluctant reader, and I do feel like if he had this program along with the units of study, he would be a child who loves to read, because it's not just these mechanical pieces that go together, it is also this other piece around learning to love reading and learning to do it with a partner and independently and in a group and all of those things. And I have been really grateful to see what the children at Osgood are able to do because of a very comprehensive program. And I appreciate Mrs. Ricky and her six very, very charming students for coming out and demonstrating what those pieces of integrity and foundations look like, so thank you.
Agreed. We do some amazing things with six-year-olds in this district. Thanks to our very, very talented kindergarten staff. Amazing program, and we're so thankful for them. Thank you so much. It's tough to give a lesson in front of the audience, too, at six o'clock at night, so thank you so much. Well done. Thank you, everyone. Thanks, guys. Always good to have the Osguiders in here, reminds us what we're doing here, right? Right? I'll just give them a second, and then we'll move on. Come on up, guys. Okay, next up, we have the leaders of our Cohasset Education Foundation here with us, and I don't know whether our officers of CEF or our superintendent want to go first to introduce this? Please do.
So we are really grateful to have any of you here with us this evening. From the CEF, Cohasset Education Foundation, for those in the public who don't know. The CEF is an amazing organization. They fundraise and they provide grants for the district, and their support allows us to do so many things. Our teachers and our principals have great ideas, and they want to be innovative, and they want to try new things, and they want to bring new things to our students, and we can't, as a district, always fund that. And through the support of the CEF, they help us make those dreams happen for our teachers and for our students. And they just recently had their spring grant cycle, and we just found out today, actually, what they were funding. But I think one of the reasons I wanted to do this in person this evening is because both Megan and Ruth have been so much a part of the CEF and are, have been in their positions as president and the head of the grants, and they're stepping down from those positions because their terms are up. And so this not only gives us the opportunity to publicly thank the CEF in general, but the both of you, for all of the the years, the hours, the dedication that you have given to the schools, it is very much appreciated. It does not go unnoticed by anyone. Even our students know a lot of the things that we have in our district comes through the support of the CEF, and I love, you know, seeing the kids actually be the ones who do some of the phone-a-thon and things like that. So I love that you're involved in so many ways and support the district, and I just want to say thank you for all that you've done over the years. We would not be where we are without the support of your your, the two of you really, and your entire organization. And so just as an example, so tonight, they're going to present their spring donation, which is going to provide funding for a playground communication board at the Osgood for some of our students who need additional support in being able to communicate with their peers. And ninja, so ninja warrior equipment for the Deer Hill Gym. That is for Mr. Humans. It's going to expand the gymnastics unit. And I, I don't, you know, I know American Ninja Warrior is a fun-filled adventure to watch every night, you know, with families. And some more indoor recess supplies for the Deer Hill. The middle school is going to bring in a speaker, Edgarity, who I've actually seen before. He's a wonderful speaker for middle school students and talks about finding who they are as people and finding their, you know, true selves and their passions and being able to share that with their classmates. Supporting some additional cameras for the yearbook. And a few, maybe a week ago, month ago, when Alyssa Gittens, Carl, and Jenna Bloom were here about the Washington DC trip. The CEF is very generously supporting that trip as well and providing some subsidies for students who want to be able to attend but can't financially, so we're very grateful for that. At the high school, they're supporting an arborist presentation, because we're going to be planting some trees. And they are awarding the middle school, high school, a new courtyard outdoor wellness classroom, which is a huge undertaking. I haven't mentioned costs with other ones, but they've donated $47,000 to complete this project. And so as we think about play and all that we've learned through the community efforts of reading, anxious generation, this is a way to bring ABA compliant games and fun to our middle school, high school students. And so it's something that the secondary level has been looking to have, and Ron Ford, who's the head of the wellness department, has been championing. So we're very grateful, and I know that he came and talked to me. He is very grateful for your support of that project.
Okay, thank you very much. Was there something you were
I ended up just talking.
Okay. All right. Well, I'll turn it over to you, Ms. Baroness Steele. Thank you for being here. We're excited to hear what you have to share.
Thank you. It's been a great six years. It's been a really fulfilling role to be on the CEF. And I'm really proud of the board that we have the past, as well as the board that we have currently, to take this organization forward in a strong position. Ruth, did you want to share anything about this particular grant cycle as well?
Um, I think I've seen the grant cycle be very varied. We've seen all sorts of different grants coming from each different school, and we're really proud that the schools and teachers have really embraced the CEF, and we're seeing more and more grants coming through. And it's exciting to see how these grants come to fruition. Our favorite And it's exciting to see how these grants come to fruition. Our favorite thing is to see photographs and anecdotes from the kids about the grants in action. And recently, in our scholarship program, we asked our scholarship applicants to write about a grant that they participated in. And we heard some wonderful stories and we loved hearing them in our board meeting about their experiences. So it's been a pleasure of working with the Deer Hill as liaison for the last six years and with the administration and all the schools. I've loved working with everybody. And I leave it in fabulous hands with Lauren Donahue.
Yeah, and we wanted to thank all the teachers for applying for the grants and the support of the administration. And also to thank all our corporate and personal or family donors that have donated because without them, it would not be possible to fund these grants. So we have one final large check demonstration.
We'll do a picture with everybody.
Sure. We're welcome to get any questions as well regarding our presentation.
I, sure, we can go around. If anyone has any questions or comments at this time, then we'll, then we'll do the picture. Mr. Carr?
Just wanted to say thank you for all you've done with us. It's been wonderful to have you. It takes, it's a big commitment. We appreciate it very much.
Thanks, Scott. Dial?
Second thought. CEF makes a huge impact for our schools. Down to a student level, up to the macro, the entire operations and vision. So we are an excellent district in large part because of the CEF and people who donate. So thank you for donating your time to that organization and thank the people who donate to the CEF to make all this stuff happen.
Thank you, Ms. Dial. Lesky?
Well, I actually had the privilege of working with both Megan and Ruth on the CEF. And we'll just echo what Superintendent Chin said about the hard work that you both have put into that organization and the hard work of the board members. From events to fundraising and everything in between. It's an exceptional group of people and thank you for your service and all that you do for the schools. I just wish you would come join us here. It's a natural next step.
Thank you, Ms. Lesky. I have found the CEF to be an extraordinary organization. I've gotten to know a lot of the members of the CEF through their efforts. And it's an extremely active and present organization. I find that it's no secret that I'm extremely underwhelmed by the physical plant of a lot of our district. And I think that most of the nice things that we have are like the room that we're sitting in right now. It's, they're all a direct result of the efforts of the CEF. And, you know, I think that it's a great way for people to get involved, you know, if, and I know Ms. Lesky was, was sort of joking. But if school committee is maybe too much of a commitment for someone or daunting, CEF is a wonderful way. It's an incredible group of parents, really friendly people that have, that are all sort of coalesced around a great mission. And you should really consider joining if you have any interest because it is kind of like the, it's like the sort of unsung lifeblood of our district. So, and they have, they throw wonderful parties too. That sort of thing. So thank you, thank you, thank you. Job well done. We're so appreciative for you and a big round of applause. Should we do the picture?
Final big check.
This is a big one.
Just like Michael Scott.
Can we do it? The books, Mr. Earls?
Yeah, I got it.
Perfect.
I'll be online. There you go. Are we good? See everyone? Oh, perfect.
Thank you, everyone.
All right, so just, wait, 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 before you guys leave, we're just going to do the form of vote. All right, is there a, was it 81,100? All right, is there a motion to accept the gift from the Cohasset Education Foundation in the amount of $81,100 as presented today by Ms. Barry Miss Steel?
So moved.
Motion's been made by Mr. Dial. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Lesky. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Sentience. Motion carries by a vote of four members. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
That's not negotiable?
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, moving right along. Mr. Earls, would you mind coming on down to the front table here? We have the recognition of our school facilities committee who have, I think, run its course and has done its job very well. The school facilities committee was reconstituted and Mr. Earls might want to help me with this. Was it 2019 we did this?
Last 2019.
Okay, and its mission was to explore the, well, it's actually named, the school facilities. And what could possibly be improved, where we needed improvement, where we needed attention, and to develop a plan to do so. And Mr. Earls chaired that committee the entire time. So all five, five, six years that it's been, I might need to go back to maybe Osgood there with the math. But he's been chairing that committee for five years and six years. Six years, six years. Just did it again. And that's a commendable, a commendable commitment. And he had a somewhat evolving group. I'm sure he'll share with us all the members of that group in a moment. Under their watch or under Mr. Earls' watch, the school facilities committee brought us the existing condition study, district-wide of all buildings. It helped propel the efforts for the feasibility study that was just completed for the secondary campus. It has helped, it has helped catapult our efforts in terms of applying to the Massachusetts School Building Authority's core program and also the accelerated repair program. It has also championed the creation of a, a long-term repair plan for mid to large-scale projects throughout the district. So it has proven very fruitful, very prolific, very useful and valuable to the district. And so at this point, I'll just turn it to Mr. Earls to sort of share whatever thoughts he has, then we'll turn over the committee. And the idea tonight is to recognize them for their efforts, but also to vote to, to dissolve it at this time. Because we feel that they have, you know, achieved their goal. So, Mr. Earls, thank you for being here. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. Also the school stabilization fund.
There you go.
Which is a big one.
It is. Yep, it's a huge one. Yes.
Well, yeah, it's been six years. It's been a long run. Happy to do it. I hope eventually we get into the MSBA. So, you know, you'll, you'll see my head pop up when that happens. Because I'm definitely a champion for that, whatever form that may be. We've had many members come and go, but the current slate is obviously myself. We had Doug Schultz, Nan Roth, Kathleen Burns, Paul Kearney, Kristen Nada, Melissa Donna. Craig, me and you on the inception of it all. So I just want to thank all the members of my committee. I want to thank every person on this, on this board, the select board, for putting me on the committee. That was their, their choice. So I want to thank, like, thank them. And yeah, I'm glad that everything we put forward. I look forward to seeing the master plan. And I am not going to be quiet. I'm just going to let you guys know that right now. I'm still going to be keeping an eye on it. Because better for worse, it's kind of my baby. And I look forward to seeing what this district does with this information going forward.
Thank you so much. Mr. Earls, any comments or questions? Mr. Carr?
Which is a, your group has been a gift. We've never understood our buildings and our facilities better ever in the history of, as long as I've been kicking around this town. So starting with that, that's a huge gift. So thank you for doing it. Massive undertaking.
Thank you, Scott. Yeah, to start off the positive, thank you very much for all the, we've worked together for the stabilization fund. And you were an incredible help in focusing efforts and just pushing things along.
So and joining meetings, giving very generous of your time. So thank you for all you've done. But I guess a couple of questions for me and one maybe back at this committee, I guess. But one is, I guess, is the, is, why, why dissolving the committee now? Is it just, I mean, you mentioned it's run its course, I guess. Is there, I'm just thinking about, because there's still a lot of facilities questions that we have.
True, but at this point, I really don't. There really isn't anything left for us to do. Our charge says one thing. Now, if you wanted to change our, our charge entirely and go in a different direction, our charge was a factifying mission. And that's what we did. We got you all the data. Charge really doesn't say to continue on and hammer the town to get going on these things.
That's helpful. I guess, I was, I was concerned it was, it was less of a mission accomplished and more of a like, nah, we don't want to do this anymore. But it sounds, it sounds like it's a, it's more of a mission.
Definitely, it's, in my opinion, I think it's run its course with what we can do. Like I said, if you so choose to end here, think that, hey, maybe we need to create something different to have somebody, you know, take care of the facilities. Because I know it's, it is, it is a big undertaking. And my number one suggestion is get, hire someone or have someone focus solely on the facilities of these, of these schools. Because right now, you share that resource with the town and it is a pain in the butt to get any information out anyway down there. Other than physically going down there like I have multiple times demanding things because I am a China shop. So that's one of my parting suggestions.
And we've benefited from that. I guess one other thing that I kind of thought in my head that you guys were working on, and Craig, you mentioned in your thing that the long-term repair plan. That's just with our stabilization fund. I know, I've, I've talked a few times about, you know, the long-term plan for how we're going to dispense those monies, how we're going to, you know, the scaling of when we do for roof replacement, roof replacements, boiler replacements, window replacements. We've got a long list of, of stuff. And so I just want to make sure that lands somewhere, either a subcommittee here or elsewhere, if it's not going to be in our facilities. So.
I think that's landing in our strategic plan.
Okay, great. So with that, I'm, I'm, thank you very much for all your help over the years and you will no doubt be called upon again.
I just wrote down steady and strong and I really appreciate how your committee, under your leadership, continued, you know, in a very sort of quiet way. I mean, no one was like, oh, what, what is this school? There was no buzz about the committee. But you accomplished so much with that wonderful group of really sort of focused town, knowledgeable, town-centered people to really sort of bring forward several projects to completion. And it was wonderful to serve with you and, and to sort of watch the committee evolve over time from this different chair. So thank you. But it really was, I mean, the amount that you did did not get shouted from the mountaintops and it should have. So, well done.
I don't think if, if I didn't volunteer, I think we'd all still be staring at each other at the first meeting because we wanted to share that. So, yeah, no, it's been fun. I've learned a lot. People that I work with in the committee are very knowledgeable, all different backgrounds. So we have a collection of individuals, all different viewpoints. I think that's really how we got it done. I don't mind being under the radar. That's fine. But, you know, as, as always, I'm sure as, as, as things evolved, it's obviously it's going to have to be more public, more visible. I mean, I look forward to that.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Earls. I'll just add, I, I echo, you know, your concerns about having a dedicated school facilities sort of employee. But at the same time, I want to, you know, voice my gratitude for our facilities department who, you know, I, I think that they can be overwhelmed from time to time because of just the demand on them. And I, I find, you know, Nick Berardi and his team to be, you know, for, at least for me, extremely responsive and I really appreciate their expertise. I mean, I think that, you know, a lot of times, especially with the MSBA process, Nick was, was key in providing some of that information that we needed about the, and his team that we needed for the applications. So, and I, I know that, you know, some of the building administrators are in touch with them a lot. Principal Sullivan, I know, is in touch with him a lot. So, you know, we thank them as well. But, but point well taken, Mr. Earls, about that. So I think that, to the point, to extend, it needs a vote from the school committee. We'll do one just out of the abundance of caution. It is a troika committee, so it is actually, there's, there's, according to bylaws, three appointees from the moderator, three appointees from the select board, three appointees from the school committee. So I don't know, dissolution was such a hard, with such a, I don't know, it's such a permanent term to me. I feel like suspension maybe is a, is a better, a better term.
Sunset is what this is.
Sure, sure. Okay, so I, I just, is there, is a motion to, at least for now, I mean, we may reconstitute at some point in time like we have done. Because it was constituted in the past and then we revived it. So is there a motion to suspend, from the school committee's perspective, the activities of the school facilities committee for now?
So moved.
Motion's been made by Mr. Carr. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Dial. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Sentience. Motion passes by a vote of four members. Thank you so much, Mr. Earls. We really appreciate your service.
Thank you very much. Don't go far.
I won't. I'm going anywhere.
Thanks.
All right, somehow we are only at the superintendent's report, but I will turn the meeting over at this time to Superintendent Schools, Ms. Sarah Shannon.
All right, so to start off my report, this, we are going to start with the recognition of Mr. Ted Carr. So I have known you the least and have had the opportunity to work with you the least. But I would like to start off on this, your last meeting as a school committee member. For how many times, is this, how many times have you been a school committee member?
Just one, one term.
Okay. You know, I would like to thank you for being so warm, welcoming and supportive of me in my new role. I know that this is not the first board you have sat on, that you have repeatedly given of yourself in different ways to support all areas of the town of Cohasset. And I am grateful that I've had the chance to get to know you and to be able to work with you and I look forward to continuing to have our paths crossed. But thank you so much for your support of the schools all these years, even though you haven't been on board. I know you have been in the role and through the success of the district. And I, I wish you well in being able to just sort of work maybe your own career and not have this on top of it. But I hope that you will stay close and continue to provide input when you have it because it's always welcome. And I will turn it over to the chair to continue to recognize Mr. Carr.
Thank you for that introduction, Superintendent Shannon. As we always do, we recognize someone's service when they've come here for, it doesn't matter how many turns. It's a big commitment and it is a hugely impactful role for our community. So I'll just start with Mr. Dial. Any comments you have to offer? And then we have a little something for, once we go around, we have a little something from Mr. Carr.
Ted, it's been an honor to, to work with you. In fact, you didn't even refer to me until just now. This was your last meeting.
Me neither. You came on. I started reading the agenda before I came in.
I mean, you came on as, as a true servant, a true public servant. We were in a situation where we didn't really have a replacement for one of our committee members and you stepped up to volunteer because you wanted to make sure that the committee went in the right direction. And I recognized that immediately. Your contributions have been immense. You've brought a lot of wisdom to this committee. And you've brought a lot of strategic tact and, and helped us through many, many harrowing kind of situations. And your perspectives will be, we missed at this, at this table, but will be remembered as well. So thank you for, for being a public servant and for what you've done. And I very much value the time we've, we've spent together.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dial, Ms. Lesky.
Thank you, Ted. My seat name. But when I, when I think of you and, and serving with you, it's not only the thanks we should be giving you, but you have this ability to give thanks to others and appreciation of others in the moments when it's most needed and in a way that just feels most genuine. And that goes a long way at some of these meetings. And I will, I, I sort of try to pick from all of my colleagues, things that I want to carry forward and, and characteristics I want to emulate. And that is one from you, that your ability to just show gratitude for the things that we have to. And that is one from you, that your ability to just show gratitude, um, for the things that we have to appreciate, even in the most difficult times. But, and you are a public servant extraordinaire. You are a community member extraordinaire. You not only sit on this board, but I think you go to every other single board's meetings, um, because you seem to always be in the know and willing to connect and willing to share. Um, so thank you. You're an absolute asset to our entire town.
Thank you all very much. It's been my honor to be here with you. And, um, so Beth taught my kids. Full circle. But, um, I, I want to thank you all and all the teachers and, uh, Jennifer, who, poor Jennifer has to put up with me in the minutes and everything. And, you know, Kathy Fogg, who is an absolute gift. We could have never caught up without. So everybody's been wonderful. Thank you for having me. And I won't go far.
It was our pleasure, Ted. You are by far one of the, um, one of the, the kindest, uh, most generous people that I have met uh, in town so far. It's a pleasure working with you. And, um, you and I share a passion for service, uh, and I, I find you quite inspirational. Just to give everyone a little color before I read the, um, description on the plaque, Ted, if you didn't know, is, uh, highly involved in the federal government. And he was involved in the state government at a very high level. And you would never know that about them, about him, because, like every good public servant does, uh, he approaches all those tasks with humility. So, and we use Ted on this because I thought that you prefer that.
I did.
It says, presented to Mr. Ted Carr in recognition of his distinguished service to the Cohasset Public Schools. And Principal Sullivan, you're going to enjoy this inscription. A dedicated Cohasset resident who has always prioritized the advancement of his town, state and country over self-interest and in doing so, has served as a remarkable example for our students as we strive to empower them to improve communities. We will, we will miss your kind and insightful presence on the committee and thank you for your many valuable contributions. School Committee Member and Secretary, two thousand twenty-two to two thousand twenty-five.
Thank you for doing it. It's lovely.
Maybe not, maybe not at the table.
Sure, we'll go over there.
Do we have a big check?
It's our favorite line, Principal Sullivan.
Hi.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Most things we've fixed are to take a shower.
We'll start giving people heads up with lots of pictures.
Oh, thanks, girl. Appreciate it.
All right, moving right along. I think, uh, we have some more superintendent's reports, right?
Yep.
So turn it back over to you, Superintendent Shannon. Thank you very much.
All right. So a few, um, updates and then I will, before I move into our end of year report. So first and most importantly, this is National Teacher Appreciation Week. And so I shared in the newsletter and we will be sharing and celebrating our teachers tomorrow. They don't know that, so this is a little spoiler alert. But I, I want to share how wonderful our teachers are here in Cohasset. I want to express my deep appreciation and respect for all of our teachers and our educators. They are the backbone of who we are and why we are successful as we are. And so to any teachers listening, thank you. We would not be the district we are without you. Um, and I look forward to celebrating you all tomorrow. Um, also, and because it's been three weeks since our last meeting, we also have had a few other appreciation days. And I just want to publicly recognize the celebration of Administrative Professionals Day, National Principals Day and School Lunch Year Day. Um, and thank each of these members of our school community. It truly takes a village to raise our children. And each of our administrative assistants, principals and school lunch folks help us do that every day. They make our students feel welcome, valued and a part of the community. And we're grateful that they're all a part of our school district. On a different note, um, NEASC has been here this week. So NEASC is the New England Association of Schools and Colleges. And they are the group that accredit all of our high schools across the state and all of New England, as well as colleges. And they were here for their decentennial accreditation visit. While here, their teams met with high school administration, faculty and students. They talked with members of central office. They visited classrooms. They were a little bit of everywhere within the high school over the past week. I had the opportunity to meet with them twice and really appreciated all of the positive accolades that they shared outside of the official process about what they experienced here at the high school. They also recognized our teachers and our students and Principal Scott. They are in the process of writing up their findings. The hope is that they will share them by the end of the school year, but they have to go through a process with the actual NEASC folks. So once they write it up, they submit it to their administrative board who do, does a review. So we may or may not get it back before the end of June. If we do, Principal Scott will share at a committee meeting, but there's probably a higher likely good that he'll come back in the fall and share that report. But they did give an unofficial summary to Principal Scott. He wrote so many accolades. They did recognize sort of the growth from their last visit here a couple of years ago to where we are right now. And so, I'm looking forward to seeing that report. Um, and just, it's a very busy time of year in schools. We always think that other times of year are busy until you get to May and June. These are probably the busiest times of the school year. There are plays, concerts, art shows, celebrations, graduation, you name it. In the last newsletter I put out, I tried to capture all of the dates. Just want to reiterate to families to look at that list to cross-reference it with school calendar, individual school calendars. Make sure everything is, is where it needs to be on your calendar, um, because there's a lot of great stuff going on. Field days, snapper sneaker. You know, spring for the arts at the high school. It's so lots of great things. And so, um, just want to make sure everybody is aware of everything we have going on. Those are all of my updates. Any questions on any of those before I move on? Okay. So, with that, that it's being a, a busy time of year, the end of the year, I am actually going to share, um, our end of the year report with regard to our district goals. I'm going to share my screen, but I'm not going to read everything on the screen. I'm just going to speak to each of the goals. And so this year was a little bit different of a year because we had just completed our strategic plan. And we were sort of in this bridge year while we developed a new strategic plan. And so in August, the leadership team came together and we identified what our goals for the year would be. They served a few purposes. They helped us complete some of the tasks that we had set forth in the last strategic plan. And they provided us with a really solid foundation moving into our new strategic plan. And we had six, six different goals. Some of them were district goals. One of them specifically was a goal for me as a new superintendent. Um, and so this document that has been shared and it's shared publicly in the packet that went out to all families. It captures a summary of each goal and what was done, as well as providing indicators and measures of success. And it is color-coded. And so anything that is green is an action item that we completed. Anything that is yellow is something that is still in process. And there are a few things that we didn't get to. Not many, but just a couple because we did have a busy year. And so the first student learning goal, it, or first goal is our student learning goal as a district. And really this goal was around strengthening our multi-tiered system of support framework. And you'll notice that we did mark this as yellow, even though we have, as you can see, completed a lot of our action items. MTSS is a really important component of any school district. It is what we think of as tier one instruction. It is the instructional model and the curriculum that we provide to every student in every classroom. It is also tier two and tier three interventions for our students who need additional supports, um, and different levels of supports. And so while this was a goal this year and we accomplished many of the tasks that we had set forth, it is an ongoing goal. We are not done with this. This is going to actually sort of as a sneak preview, be a focus of our strategic plan as well. But I want to give a lot of credit to our new Director of Student Services, Michael Stapleton, our building principals and our MTSS teams, because they spent a lot of time trying to create consistent definitions, structures, processes, so that when we talked about MTSS, we were all talking about the same thing. We also did a lot of work, or Michael and his team and the principals did a lot of work with regard to, um, what communication with families looks like around MTSS. And they also dug in to look at what our D cap looks like. That's our district accomod- curriculum accommodation plan, which needed to be updated and allows for teachers to make general accommodations for any student, whether they're on a plane or not. And a lot of the times that is something that the MTSS team will turn to as they're looking at individual students. And so this was a lot of work and it is creating a really solid foundation for the work that we will identify next meeting in our strategic plan. The second goal was really my goal as a brand new superintendent. It was my professional practice goal. I think all of you know that I was part of the new superintendent induction program this year. I attended monthly sessions. Some of them were half-day remote workshops. Some of them were, were full day in person. And I also had a mentor who you met several times in Marie La Croix. And she and I worked together twice a month. Um, she came to leadership meetings. She came to learning walks around the district. She came to a whole lot of things to see how I worked. Um, and she provided me with feedback and, um, you know, was a really good thought partner as I maneuvered through the, the start of this year. Um, and so I am happy to say that I have complete, well, I have one more meeting next week. But I have almost completed year one of NISUP and I will look forward to engaging in year two. Our third goal was around teaching and learning. And this was really a goal that was written to give us the opportunity to complete some work that was identified in the last strategic plan. This was really to complete the curriculum mapping process and to, sorry, to complete, not create, I lost my words there, complete the curriculum mapping process and to complete the curriculum benchmark assessment process. And so, you know, led by Dr. Scollins, Mr. Roberts, the principals, they, along with staff, have been working on this for a few years. Um, I think we can, we can say that at the end of this year, this is a action item that we will have completed. And it is through countless hours of hard work by so many of our teachers who worked tirelessly on, you know, early release days, all day PD days in department meetings and grade level PLCs that this work has been done. And so we are in the final stages. You will see that most of this goal is marked off as green, complete. We are getting to the point where between now and the end of August, we will have gathered some feedback from families around the format and how we share these curriculum maps with families. And then they will be on our website, um, for the start of next school year. And so this has been a huge undertaking and, you know, I was here for just a moment of it. So it was Dr. Scollins and her team and all the staff that this happened. So I want to give them credit. Our fourth goal was, is social emotional wellness. And this was really, um, a continuation of a goal that was in the strategic plan around restorative justice and building community-based circles. A lot of work has been completed within this goal as well. And this will continue to be work that we do as part of the next strategic plan. We have trained enough teachers through, um, some trainings with Suffolk University so that both the middle school and high school ran community circles this year. The high school ran three different community circle sessions. The middle school ran community circles through their utility block. And that really helps us build the capacity of our students to talk with one another about things that they don't normally have conversations about, get to know one another in a different way, build relationships with students they don't talk to on a regular basis and to, um, really think about how we interact together as a community. We're also really excited because we brought community circles to the adult level. And we did cross-district community circles this year. Every day that we had a full day PD, we brought all the teachers to this building of the entire district. And we had circles where you had teachers from Osco, Deer Hill, middle school, high school and central office. And everybody was together in getting to know one another and building community. And on the last day in March, the feedback actually was, can we keep doing this next year? Because we're just really feeling like we're getting to know one another. And so the whole purpose of these circles is to build community. And so that's something that we're excited to continue to do. The focus this year has been at the secondary level. And so now the next phase is to think about how this interacts with many of the systems and structures that already exists at the elementary level, things like, um, responsive classroom, the DR team circles. Um, so where does it fit? And how do we continue to grow it as, you know, I keep giving these sneak previews. It's hard not to into the strategic plan. But as we continue to really think about what a, a, a school culture that creates a sense of belonging for all students looks like. And this is going to be a key piece of that. Our fifth goal was around resources. Now, when we wrote this goal, I don't know that any of us foresaw some of the challenges that we were going to encounter this year. So this goal was really around assessing and analyzing district resources, including staffing, budget, transportation, class size, technology to forecast future budget needs. I think this is probably the goal that we dug into the most, or at least I personally dug into the most. And it's a goal that helped us identify the shortfall that we were going to be facing this year and for FY twenty-six. And I think it was as a result of this work that we figured out how to minimize as best we could the shortfall for this year and then how to close the 1.4 million dollar gap that we had to close for FY twenty-six. This is going to continue to be a focus for us as we build out a more long-term financial plan. So that we can feel more confident about our financial future. And so this was, this is a, was a well-timed goal, uh, because we did a lot of analysis in all of those areas. Our sixth goal was around communication and engagement. Looking at how we continue to strengthen communication in areas of, to bring in families in meaningful ways. We did things like redesign the newsletter. We did a lot with continuing the conversation around the anxious generation at all school levels. Principals in different areas did more work with families to get input. You know, Principal Sullivan had several family forums. Principal Scott had the cell phone task force that involved parents as well. I think we had some, some higher goals of looking more at some theory with regard to family engagement. And creating some additional plans for family engagement. We just did not get to that this year. I think with the strategic plan and the feasibility study and the budget concerns that those sort of took center stage. So these will continue to live as we think about, you know, our next strategic plan. And then just sort of in summary, in addition to the actual goals, I personally really wanted to come in and build and strengthen relationships between the schools and the town and to really get to know and build relationships with the teachers. I was new to them in, in some ways. And I was coming in in a very different role than those who knew me. The role I had been playing. And so I really use this year to become familiar with the school district in a way that I had not been. And it's been a busy year for sure, but a very rewarding one. And it was very much a bridge year, but I think it was a well-timed bridge year because it's allowed us to really wrap up some of the very important initiatives that we needed to complete and lay that strong foundation for the new strategic plan. And I think that next meeting, when we come to you with the new strategic plan, you'll see how this year really was a springboard for a lot of that work. And as I sort of wrap up the, the gold report, I just want to personally thank everyone in the central office and our principals and educators for all they've worked, all the work that they did to help accomplish all of these goals. And to really sort of help me transition into the district. And so, you know, in that, I would say this is the work that we did. We obviously are still working for the next six weeks and will continue to work on these goals. But for the most part, we are, we are in a place where we are able to say we, we've completed a lot of the work we set forth to do.
Well, thank you for that presentation, Superintendent Shannon. Appreciate that. Are there any questions for the superintendent, bearing in mind that, you know, it's seven fifteen. We still have a good amount of meeting left. Having said that, Mr. Carr, do you have any questions or comments? Thank you, Mr. Carr.
I'm going to take my full seven minutes.
And by the way, it's three.
Thank you.
All right, perfect. Thank you for that. Does that conclude the superintendent's report?
It does.
All right, so we'll move right along into our teaching and learning block. And at this moment in time, I think I'd turn the meeting over to our director of student services, Michael Stapleton. I would invite our CPAC liaisons, the co-presidents, I think they are. Ms. Bryant and Mrs. Davis, if you guys want to take a seat up here at table with us so you can join in all the fun.
And then I have guests as well tonight. So if you have them first.
Yeah, so what can we, I, maybe, maybe Ms. Bryant and Ms. Davis, can you guys, can you guys sit on like the perimeter seats? And then we get the educators in the middle there?
Well, I'll start and I know we might be getting tonight with just a night data update as we get settled in, which I report on every meeting. So, you know, you'll see the data for April. April was a very busy month considering there was a vacation week in there for the Office of Student Services. There were seven annual review meetings held at the elementary level. There were five reevaluation meetings also held. Four students were found eligible. One student was found not eligible. We had six initial evaluations. Two of those came through MTSS. And one of those students was found eligible while the other one was not. Four requests came from family. The student that was eligible came from early intervention, so a student who was three years old. And then three students were found not eligible. At the secondary level, there were 12 annual review meetings. There were six reevaluations. So a lot of testing and evaluation going on right now at both levels. This is a very busy time of year for our school psychologists to conduct those testings and then the subsequent meetings that need to occur within the timelines. And there were two initial evaluations. Three, actually. So two came through MTSS, one was eligible and then one came from the family. And then I shared one at a district meeting totaling thirty-nine meetings in one month. Busy, busy month. So I'm going to start my screenshot for a second and talk a little bit. I'm excited. This is my first presentation where I've invited guests to come and speak on a topic, which means a lot. So I also want to start with some good news. Last year, the, you know, we received a notice from the, from Desi from Massachusetts that the special education department was found to be category of needs assistance related to some state reporting that's conducted, you know, each year. And so late Friday, we received our formal update for the 2024 year. And I'll just read, you know, the statement that came out. It says classic was determined to be meets requirements with a score of ninety-three percent, earning thirty-eight out of forty-one possible points, which is a huge win. And a lot of it was like data collection, but it also led directly to the spread strategies work. That was a real focus of my first few months on, you know, within this role in this year. And a number of people, you know, that are here participated on those committees as we talked about closing the proficiency gap for students with disabilities, making sure that we were in compliance, you know, with different components from the state. And so our new score, which again will come out each year, we scored out of total twenty points for performance. We scored it within eighteen and I'll dive more into this update as it connects, you know, hopefully in my June update. But to score eighteen out of twenty points for performance was really, really nice to see. We still have some targeted areas that connect directly to the spread strategies work. And like kind of perfect timing, some of what we're reporting on today and some of the work that we've done in different buildings this year. For compliance, we scored sixteen out of sixteen, which as someone being a stickler for the rules, it's, you know, a hundred percent there. And then other considerations, we scored four out of five possible points. Again, with some data collection and reporting, which I have to give a huge shout out to Lisa Porter, these two, her IT who really took that information when it was last reported and helped us create the right systems within Aspen, make sure that we're reporting the right data, that we're coding things the right way, which is not my skill set. And so this is a huge team effort for compliance and performance across the entire district. And it means that we no longer need to participate in the spread strategies like formalized, you know, meetings that were held multiple times in process. With that being said, we're still going to do all of that work that we worked very hard this fall to do and to outline next steps to really close the proficiency gap on state performance and just overall performance for our students with disabilities. So I think this is great news and I was happy to get this late Friday afternoon, which is why it wasn't on the agenda. The news to celebrate and then also, you know, important to keep in mind moving forward. Which brings me into why I invited Ray Forrest and Karen Johnson here tonight. Some of the specific work that we identified through spread strategies in the fall was targeting two initiatives across all grade levels. And I'm really highlighting the fifth grade right now and some of the work that they have done, which is really amazing. And I'll share my screen in a moment. But the two initiatives that we talked about was continue or and could have committed to is to continue to develop co-teaching across the district and really thinking about how we bring that down to the elementary levels. I had talked in a previous presentation and through CPAC this year that when the initiative started in, you know, 2018, we were at the middle school and the high school and it's taken some time to move backwards, you know, down to the lower levels, which is an inclusive practice and a best practice for supporting students with disabilities. And really all students in general can benefit from that. And we'll hear a little bit about that today. So co-teaching was one and then direct teaching of executive functioning and test taking strategies. When the spread strategies task force met this year multiple times, it came up over and again, you know, from parents, from students, from teachers that students with disabilities may be struggling with those test taking skills and what that looks like. And so Mairead and Karen are our fifth grade co-teaching team. And I'm going to turn it over to them for their presentation about how they have directly taught executive functioning skills this year and test taking strategies, which, you know, I hope we'll see it have payoff this spring as our students take MCAS and just also become lifelong learners and think about the different strategies that you need to employ when taking assessments and tests. So let me share my screen and I'll turn it over.
Welcome. I knew you guys were here. I just didn't know how long the initial parts of the presentation were going to be. It's yours. That's why I didn't invite you up at the beginning.
Great. So thank you for having us. Like Michael said, there were a lot of different factors that, you know, played into us developing this kind of unit, for lack of a better word. With our work on this bad strategies team and through co-teaching, it's really afforded us to have a lot of opportunities to meet students where they're at and to see, you know, areas of need for not just students with disabilities, but really for all students. I think, you know, Karen, you could speak even in fifth grade much longer than I am. So to the trends of, you know, what you've seen in the classroom, but.
Yeah, I think this was great because obviously it's not something that's brand new, right? Like thinking about how students can access test-taking skills, recording the questions, how do I attack this? And just giving them, you know, the, some strategies to work on that. So we did a lot of practice with that, but we did kind of set it up as a unit and you know, every day there was something new and.
And so those that are unfamiliar with executive functioning specifically with the classroom, it kind of falls into these four buckets. So I won't read it all, but organization, time management, working memory and then impulse control and focus. So those are kind of our main areas of focus.
Can I just add something? No, because I think sometimes like when you hear it like executive functioning, you're like, oh, keep your desk clean. Right? And, and there are so many more pieces to it. And I think, you know, we were very, you know, open and honest with the kids about like this is about your thinking skills and how you're, you know, approaching different tasks and everybody does that differently. So we're, you know, kind of giving them more language to use for themselves.
Yeah. And I think, you know, especially in fifth grade, it's a transition year. I have a lot of transitions to middle school. So we're thinking about how are the day-to-day tasks becoming more complex? How can we set students up with those tools to become more independent and more confident in using and displaying what they know? And really looking at having that self-regulation piece, being able to look and reflect and say, what do I need help, more support with? How can I show what I know? And really just that overall increase of independence. So that kind of outlines, you know, our why.
And I think Mike said it too, like lifelong learners, right? Like these are skills that isn't just, we don't want to say this is just for MCAS, right? You know, they're, they're finding, like after we did this, we had happened to have a math test and there was some wording that was wrong and they, they caught it, Hawkeyes, right? And I was like, oh, you're right. But they did what we taught them to do. And so just having them recognize that it's not just for something, you know, not just for a test.
And I think that goes to this slide. You know, we do want to clarify, there is a difference with how to take a test versus teaching to the test. Teaching to the test is not what we want to do. You know, that would be looking at MCAS, looking at that item analysis, identifying the power standards and only teaching to that and only teaching to that, to the test in a certain way. And we have a very robust curriculum and many opportunities to engage in the standard. So we don't want to hinder that. However, we want to provide students with the opportunities to display what they do know and really set them up with procedures that make them more independent. And it not only, like Karen said, it doesn't just transfer to a test, it transfers to a lot of life opportunities. So it's important for us to make that clarification. We're teaching how to take a test, how to attack something we don't know, how to attack something that we're unfamiliar with or not teaching to the test.
And to give them the confidence that they know that they can do it. I think they, you know, think about, you know, certainly we did like a little, you know, poll with them like about MCAS and their, you know, anxiety up here. And so teaching them these different skills, we, you know, you'll see later in the slides, but we did kind of like an after the test sort of poll and, you know, they got that it helped.
So over the last two months, we've really been focusing on some of our co-teaching lessons with these different pieces, really that initiation of independence and then providing them with the routines and procedures for tackling challenging tasks, being able to self-monitor and chunk things into manageable parts and being able to recognize, oh, I don't understand this. How can I go back or how could I look at this wording differently? And then just to really identify what the directions were asking, that was a big component of some of our lessons. So again, here it's kind of outlined, we talked a lot about efficiency. What does that look like? Efficiency is not rushing, but it's also not taking all day. And how can we manage our work vocabulary, open response questions, multiple choice directions, stress management, self-monitoring in general, and then anxiety as a piece.
And I think we kind of talked about these as they're, on the slide, they're not quite split in half. But like the, you know, the functional skills and then kind of, you know, that anxiety, stress management, self-monitoring piece, that's just as important to acknowledge for them. And that's something that, you know, they can also work on managing with skills to help them address all of those other things that they need to do.
And it's great to see this work happening now too, as we think about future planning and just overall student health and wellness. We have these conversations at different grade levels and at different developmental levels. It's great.
I believe the next couple of slides are just some pictures of the classroom. So this is some of the work that we were doing specifically with, one of the big factors was really looking at especially specifically open response questions, but really questions in general and identifying, well, what are the action verbs? What is that? What are they telling us to do? Really creating a checklist to go through those problems and then using that checklist to then self-correct and edit our work. So we worked a lot on open response problems. We created routines and procedures for writing. So the students kind of had a checklist, identified, all right, is this narrative or expository? Am I being asked to write a paragraph? Am I being asked to write an essay? What graphic organizers could I use? And by the end of the day or the weeks, I should say, the students were able to do that independently. We also did a lot of vocabulary work, looking at multiple meaning words, right? Drawing conclusions doesn't actually mean drawing a picture, things like that. And looking at common vocabulary that tends to be on assessments.
Questions. Yeah, there's a lot of words.
And so like Karen mentioned earlier, we did provide students with a survey and we, after the assessment and just asked them, you know, how do you feel now that this is post ELA MCAS? Just how do you feel about the strategies that we worked on and reflecting on our own teaching practices? So up we surveyed two different classes, so a total of thirty-five students are reflected in this data. And so before, the students felt kind of somewhat prepared. The average was about the three point five one. I believe it on my last thought, but, and then after we took that data again and it was four point one seven. And I know you can see there's some outliers with the ones and the twos not feeling prepared. So it's important, you know, once we did take this data, we looked and, you know, does the student have anxiety? Is the student on an IUP? And really addressing those concerns with those students individually after we did the survey. But overall, a lot of the students said that they were more confident and they felt better about taking the assessments.
And we, you know, for them, when you say prepared, they're like, oh, I know the reading or I know, you know, like they think about skills. And so, you know, we explained like, what is executive functioning? And kind of really, you know, named it for them and talked to them about like, now you have all these things in your toolboxes. And they use, I mean, we started science MCAS today and they were not watching too carefully, but they were doing all the things. And so it's, you know, kind of saying to them, we, we did this already, like you already have these skills. And just because this is science, you're still applying the same skills.
All right. And the goal of learning two is to be able to generalize these taught skills across different domains, whether that's math, science.
So we also asked students, you know, for our own reflection, like what academic strategies did they find helpful? So these were some of the ones that students use, they thought were most helpful and that can transfer to a variety of different assessments and subjects. So we had TTQA, which is kind of a question around boxes and bullets, which is a strategy used for expository writing as well as races, stop and jots, which is that self-monitoring, the comprehension piece, rereading the passage and then using the prompt directions to check their writing. And then we also asked, because that social emotional piece plays into it as well. Just we did go over some strategies of, you know, how do we manage when we're feeling stressed? How do we manage when we feel anxious, when we need a break in a testing environment? Or when we are recognizing that we're getting distracted? So these were some of the techniques that they, that were repetitive, that were brought up. So taking a walk, being able to stretch, doing desk pushups. Thinking about something positive was my favorite, deep breathing techniques and then taking a break.
And I have to say, like, even like, they take advantage of these and even like the stretching, right? Like we're in a room and you can hear a pin drop, it's super quiet, but they, I, you know, kind of watch them, like they'll go with, you know, with their, you know, on the, like a chair pushup. I actually had a student today that had took some science notes, but also had a big eight like on the page and was like, you know, doing that for themselves and it was great.
And then, you know, we asked, you know, MCAS and high stakes testing. You know, it does make students anxious. So we asked them to give a piece of advice to students that have not taken it before. And so that's reflected there. But a lot of it is that you've got this, you know what you're doing and just take your time. It'll be fine.
If the last one's how I approach life.
One step at a time. One step at a time.
So I know that was quick, but, um, any questions for us? The depth is definitely ongoing work. I think the tricky thing about, well, the tricky thing, but the great thing about being teachers, especially in special education is teaching is very fluid, it changes. So what's going to work for this group might not work for it next year. And Karen and I might be here with a totally different presentation. Um, but it's been, it's been really great to see their confidence and their independence grow over the last couple of months.
Well, thank you both. Any questions to car or comments?
I love the idea of the survey with the kids. What a great idea. It just gives them ownership, gives them impact. They can assess themselves. It's very cool. Great idea.
Thanks for the guy.
This is, this is fantastic. You can see a lot of the stuff that you covered here are not just skills that you use for a test, but like skills you even like, um, how to break, how to think about. A lot of times I think we'd get focused on teaching substance or thinking about substance and not thinking about the mechanism application. Um, is this something that can be rolled out more broadly to the, to the student body, to, um, to a, to a broader array of, of students? As a kind of a thing that maybe it's not as focused, but I think a lot of these skills are something that all of our students can do.
Yeah, definitely. I mean, we had started really in Karen and my co-teaching class. Um, and then with, I am also in a couple of other classrooms, um, with Julia Levine, we started rolling this out as well. So I do think it's, it's definitely something that's feasible.
And some interesting issues to explore, if there's like a mini session or something that, uh, and not just, not just about the MCAS, but just about any testing in general. And that, I guess, poses a line. So, you know, great job. Thank you guys for putting this together. I think you, you have done something great.
And there's different executive function supports across like all, all schools right now. Is that something that I'm working to kind of like organize and sequence out? You know, we have an executive functioning group that runs at the high school during utility where like this same type of work. And so I think it's really great to use consistent language across buildings. And again, like with developmental levels, so that we see kids that are able to navigate, you know, a five-box schedule at the high school and apply the executive functioning skill. So it's definitely something we're looking at expansion.
Yeah, I can use a little.
I have a resource on my website.
Mrs. Leskey.
I, I mean, I think this is exceptional, um, so important for students. I think it extends, as, as it has been said, extends beyond tests. I'm thinking long-term projects. I'm thinking you have homework at home. And I think that at least in my house, when a child has a couple of strategies they can choose from, it allows them to feel autonomous as they approach their work. I'm really overwhelmed for this problem, problem. I know at least I have to draw a little grid first. And so these teaching strategies, um, and multiple strategies so that students can figure out what works for me, um, allows this autonomy and confidence that I think is immeasurably important in terms of then the acquisition of skills. Because it creates like some calm and some relaxation that then allows the information to come into your brain. Or at least that's how the non-psychologist in me would explain it.
And I think just because I have been in it for a long time, like their ownership of their learning is something that's really important. And like recognizing that they can do more for themselves than sometimes they think they can. Um, and so I found that this, doing this in a very structured way, like I, you know, was thinking about what we were doing. I'm like, I feel like I've probably done parts of this, but not cohesive like that. And it just, it made so much more of an impact and, you know, certainly it would be across different rhythms.
I just have to say, Bertie, never heard these words come out of his mouth before. Did tell me he found the MCAS enjoyable today. He felt confident. And I think whatever you did, now we see it now. Resonating with him.
Enjoyable.
Enjoyable. Yeah. Hats off to you.
Well, uh, thank you, Sluski. And I thank all of you, uh, huge assets to the district, wonderful educators. We're lucky to have you. And, uh, thank you for, for doing this. I love seeing the graph where, um, after, uh, the introduction of executive functioning skill, the, the answers got more pushed towards the extreme compared side and it's valuable. So it's very obviously making a notable difference for the kids. So thank you for everything you do. And, uh, you know, I'm only totally biased because Johnson taught my daughter and I, and I think she said that the world is very, very. Thank you for everything. Thanks for being here. Thanks for staying late. Sorry, it was giving me anxiety. You guys were waiting so long. Sometimes how it, how it, how it happens, you know? Um, so before we move on though, I want to ask Ms. Brian and Ms. Davis, if you guys have any report from CPAC or any questions or any concerns raised at CPAC? Or you wanted to sort of just like, even though it's on the agenda, we can at least raise them and we can sort of consider it for future agenda or whatever. If there's anything or if you have any comments or questions about any of this.
There's the CPAC meeting tomorrow at eleven o'clock.
Yep. I think Dr. Scollins is going to be there.
With two topics. Robert, so one of our, um, middle school special ed teachers is preventing on the summer slide and how to prevent regression of skills over the summer months. Time away with, you know, the last in-person CPAC meeting. And then the second portion of the meeting, I know Dr. Scollins, um, will be there to talk about the Student Opportunity Act, which I know came up at a previous meeting. Um, just to answer questions and clarify information about that.
And Rob, our.
Yeah. Busy hour tomorrow.
We do. And we have our apple is coming to reclose the, um, collaboration we did this year. So we'll be ending that tomorrow as well.
We're spending the entire day together.
Wait, wait, uh, is that virtual?
Yeah.
They were sending out a link in the morning.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's still a lot later. So I've, I know that I'm supposed to go, so.
So it's just like it's one o'clock tomorrow, but we, we did great things this year, um, through Apple. So that was an awesome collaboration and, um, our last meeting was excellent. We had, um, a parent and teacher, um, Erin DeMello presented on goals and, um, accommodations. And did a whole presentation, which was well received. So yeah, we have one more meeting after this one. I think we're going to be implementing, um, CPAC office hours going forward. That was something that came out of our Apple collaboration and, um, just for like parents to come like at the library, we're going to do with them. I think it'll be a nice addition for parents that might want more like, um, private setting or if they have specific questions, um, or they can't come to meetings. So just trying different ways to get people involved. That's all we have.
Just great job. I'm so glad that you were able to send those staff to.
Yes.
And I'll definitely have more information to come on that too. I'm still unpacking like the indicators, but it's like a, kind of like a full circle moment for me to look at. Like when I was submitting indicated data in the fall and not knowing how that lines up in reports. So that this report, now I see how it all connects. Um, and so again, a lot of it was like the data collection component and then really like some really positive news too, which once I have a little more time to unpack about how we do see that proficiency gap close over time for our students. Um, and like a big, where we were kind of flagged again, and I'll dive more into this, is at the lower levels, you know, the grade four MCAS. And so to know that we're targeting it now, I think we'll hopefully see positive results too. And then to know that it does, you know, close over time with a high quality, with the curriculum that we have and instruction by our educators is reassuring. So a positive report for sure.
Thank you. I'll just give a plug quickly to CPAC before we leave. CPAC is the Special Education Parents Advisory Council. So, uh, if you are someone that, uh, has a student that's, uh, either, um, on IEP or five oh four or is just someone that you see your learner struggling and starting to stress you out or frustrate you or give you anxiety. You do not have to go it alone. Uh, there is a group of wonderful parents who are extremely knowledgeable about special education, uh, all facets of it. And they work closely with the administration and the school committee, obviously, um, to ensure that everyone's voice and perspectives are heard and that, you know, our district is doing, um, its best by our most vulnerable learners. So if you are in that position, uh, reach out to Ms. Brian or Ms. Davis. Uh, you can go online and find them online as well. Um, it's the CPAC, S-E-P-A-C. Okay? Thank you all for being here.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, let's move right into the budget resource and governance section where we have some gifts uh, to consider. Ms. Owen, you want to run us through these fairly, uh, concisely?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
So, um, the first one I can up mine is they both from the South Shore Music Circus. Um, what is the amount of all the circus and residents for fifteen hundred dollars? Um, and the second one is a check for our fifteen hundred dollars for the high school. Um, is the purpose of the sports officiating program that they're trying to put in place? Um, so I want to thank them very much. They, they said, you know, make sure we recognize that the South Shore Music Circus, um, funded those. The next one is a check in the amount of one thousand seven hundred forty-nine dollars and fifty cents from, um, the Cohasset PSO and it's going to.
Bus.
Bus, grades, sorry, sorry dude. It's for the middle school grade seven bus transportation to help with the trip that they went on or going on. They also, um, Cohasset PSO donated a thousand dollars to the multi multicultural community event grant, um, which I believe is Mosaic. Yeah. And then we also have a check from Abington Bank in the amount of two hundred and fifty dollars going towards the credit for life. So we just need to vote with that being those gifts. Thank you very much. You're very generous. We've got one, two, three, four, five.
You so much, Ms. Owen. We'll take the first two together because they're from the same donor. Um, is there a motion to accept, uh, gifts evidenced by items F1 and F2 from the South Shore Music Circus in the amount of fifteen hundred dollars and fifteen hundred dollars respectively? Motion they made by Mr. Carr. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Leskey. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Sentences? Motion carries by majority vote of four members. It is accepted. Thank you, Ms. Owen. Please, if we can send the form letter to the circus, uh, the music circus, thanking them, the thank you letter that we have. Um, the next gift is the, uh, gift from the Cohasset, Parent School Organization for the Grade Seven Bus Transportation, uh, as presented by Ms. Owen in the amount of one thousand seven hundred forty-nine dollars and sixty cents. Is there a motion to accept that gift? Motion been made by Mrs. Leskey and seconded by Mr. Carr. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Sentences? Motion carries by a vote of, a majority vote of four members. Next gift is, uh, for, again, from the parent, uh, Cohasset Parent School Organization for the multi multicultural community event in the amount of one thousand dollars. That's presented by our director of finance operations tonight. Is there a motion to accept that gift in the amount of one thousand dollars? So, motion's been made by Mr. Dial. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Leskey. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Sentences? Motion carries by a majority vote of four members. And last but not least, a gift from Abington Bank for the Credit for Life Program in the amount of two hundred and fifty dollars as presented by Ms. Owen tonight. Is there a motion to accept the gift? Motion made by Mr. Dial. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Leskey. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Sentences? Motion carries by a majority vote of four members. So all gifts have been accepted and we'd ask that a letter, uh, be sent to each of our very generous donors. Thank you, thank you, thank you so much. We love gifts. Thank you. All right. Uh, does that conclude the budget resource and governance, uh, report, um, Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Okay. Move into our community relations, communication section. Any reports from subcommittees or liaison positions from anyone? Just fire at will. Nothing here. All right.
Um, the high school school council did meet.
That's true.
Um, and they discussed changes to the handbook, which will be subsequently presented, um, I think next week to the school committee.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Leskey. Anything else?
We're, um, continuing to, uh, research aspects around the electric bus with the.
We have, I, we have a call next week.
Yep. Well, this is my last meeting apparently until the new guy shows up, I'm still responsible.
You are. You are indeed. You own that, Mr. Carr. All right. Thank you. Any other updates? Moving on to block H, school committee governance. There are no topics.
We actually have one.
We do?
We, we, yes.
I don't think I was.
I've, no, no, we're, it's a presentation that didn't make it into my report that we just want to make the public aware of. Um, we have in sort of, to continue to extend our anxious generation conversation on Monday, May nineteenth. Um, Greg Kulwick is coming, um, to do a parent presentation around AI. It's a subject that lots of parents have lots of questions about. And so he's going to give, um, just, uh, you know, he's going to help us learn as old people, help us learn and answer questions.
And he's done a lot of work. He did a lot of work with us during COVID, um, and trained a lot of teachers. And he's already presented to teachers and then he will, um, be working with students next fall. And so, and that came from a grant, a grant, a CEF grant. So we're really fortunate to be able to bring him in.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much for that. Ms. Shannon and Dr. Scollins. Uh, moving on, we do have quite a few minutes to approve, thanks to our committee secretary, Mr. Carr and Ms. Bach. Uh, and Ms. Saridis for pointing that out. We had, uh, worked to, um, some of these may have been approved. We're going to, out of a bonus caution, approve all of them again because we need to post these. Uh, our clerk, um, town clerk, very helpfully notified Ms. Saridis, this needs to be done. So we want to make sure that we're in compliance and that everyone has access to the minimum meetings if they would like. And so we're going to do that. We're going to go through them, uh, one by one in chronological order, starting with the Wednesday, April sixteenth, two thousand twenty-five meeting on school choice. Mr. Carr, you must abstain because you were not present for that. The rest of the members present tonight may vote. Um, are there any discussion points? This is a, all these minutes are included in your packet as, um, item H1. All right. Seeing none. Is there a motion to approve those minutes? Some motions been made by Mr. Dow, seconded by Mrs. Leskey. All in favor? Aye. Um, opposed? Abstentions?
Stay.
Mr. Carr abstains. That motion carries by a majority vote of three members. Those minutes are approved. April sixteenth, two thousand twenty-five, a regular meeting of the Cohasset School Committee. Again, Mr. Carr, you were not present. You will need to abstain. Is there a motion to approve those minutes as presented tonight, item H1? Some of, motion been made by Mr. Dial.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Leskey. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Sentences?
Card.
Mr. Carr abstains. Motion carries by majority vote of three members. The, uh, regular school committee meeting of April, Wednesday, April twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-four. Mr. Dial, you were not present, so you need to abstain. Is there a motion to approve those minutes as presented in item H1?
Some.
Which made by, made by Ms. Leskey. So second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Carr. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Sentences?
Abstain.
Mr. Dial abstains. Motion carries by majority vote of three members. A public hearing on school choice from Wednesday, April twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-four. Uh, same members voting, same members abstaining for this one. Um, is there a motion to approve those meeting minutes as presented in item H1? Motion been made by Ms. Leskey. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Carr. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Sentences?
Abstain.
Mr. Dial abstains. Motion carries by a vote of three members. Um, next is the Wednesday, June fifth, two thousand twenty-four, regular meeting. All members present tonight may vote on this. Is there a motion to approve those as the presented in item H1?
Some.
Maybe by Mr. Dial.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Leskey. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Sentences? Motion carries by majority vote of four members. Next is the regular school committee meeting of Wednesday, September twentieth, two thousand twenty-three. So it's not chronological order. I'm going back in a time machine apparently. Um, I apologize for stating that in the beginning. Mr. Dial, you were not present at this meeting, so you must abstain. Um, is there a motion to approve the minutes as presented in item H1?
Some.
Made by Ms. Leskey, seconded.
Card.
By Mr. Carr. All, uh, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Sentences?
Stay.
Mr. Dial abstains. Motion carries by a vote of, majority vote of three members. Meeting minutes for the regular meeting of Wednesday, November twentieth, two thousand twenty-four. All members present at this meeting may vote on this, um, these minutes. Is there a motion to approve those minutes as presented in item H1? Made by Mr. Carr. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Leskey. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Sentences? Motion carries by a vote of four members. Uh, next is the, uh, regular meeting of Wednesday, December fourth, two thousand twenty-four. Is there, uh, Mr. Dial, you were not present. Abstain. Is there a motion to approve the meeting as presented in item H1?
Some.
Made by Ms. Leskey. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Carr. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Sentences?
Abstain. Abstain.
Motion carries by a majority vote of three members, next is the regular school committee meeting of Wednesday, December eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four. All members present, I may not vote on this, I was not present, so um. Is there a motion to approve those meeting minutes for December eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four as presented in item H1?
So moved.
Motion's been made by Mr. Dials, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Leskey, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, chair abstains, motion carries by a majority vote of three.
I will gone records, I think that was one of my favorite meetings.
Very clever. The next are the meeting minutes from the regular meeting of the school committee on Wednesday, February twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-five. All members present tonight may vote, is there a motion to approve the meetings as presented in item H1?
So moved.
Motion's been made by Mr. Dials, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Leskey, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, sentience, motion carries by a majority vote of four members, we're getting there. Uh, next is the, uh, are the, excuse me, uh, meeting minutes from the regular meeting of Wednesday, March fifth, two thousand twenty-five. All members present tonight may vote, is there a motion to approve these meeting minutes as presented in item H1? Which been made by Ms. Leskey, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Dial, all in favor, aye, all opposed. Sentience, motion carries by a majority vote of four members. Next are the meeting minutes from the regular meeting of Wednesday, March nineteenth, two thousand twenty-five. All members present tonight may vote, is there a motion to approve these minutes as presented in item H1?
So moved.
Motion's been made by Mr. Dials, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Leskey, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, sentience, motion carries by a vote of four members, last but certainly not least. The meeting minutes for Wednesday, April second, two thousand twenty-five, regular meeting of Cohasset School Committee. Ms. Leskey, you were not present for this, so you may abstain. Um, is there a motion to approve these meeting minutes?
So moved.
Motion's been made by Mr. Dial, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Carr, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, abstentions?
Abstain.
Leskey abstains, those meetings have been approved by a majority vote of three members. Superintendent Shannon, please ask Ms. Saridis to. Uh, post those, or ask the clerk to post those, and they have been approved. Alright, uh, last but not least is executive session, I don't think we have any reason to move into the executive session. So, we reach our last block of the agenda, which calls for a motion to adjourn this meeting of the school committee, is there a motion? Appropriately made by Mr. Carr, is there a second?
Stay in with us.
We just want to keep you.
Yeah. Okay. Second.
Seconded by Mr. Dial, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, sentience, motion carries by a majority vote of four members, thank you all so very much for being here with us tonight. Have a great evening.
This has been fun, you guys.